My name is Dana Dillon. I am the Teachers' Retirement Board Chair. It is 1:06 on Thursday, February 6, 2014. And we're gathered here today in the board room at 100 Waterfront Place in West Sacramento to hold a hearing to receive public comments on proposed regulations initiated by the Teachers' Retirement Board. The board has proposed regulations to interpret and make specific education code sections 2211-2.5, 2211-9.2, and 22905 concerning credible compensation and related statutes. The proposed regulations we are concerned with today are new sections 27200 through 27602, added in new articles 1 through 5 of New Chapter 2, Division 3, Title V of the California Code of Regulations. Under the rulemaking provisions of the California Administrative Procedure Act, this is the time and place set for the presentation of statements, arguments, and contentions orally and in writing for or against the regulations, notice of which has previously both been published, which has previously been both published and sent to interested parties. This is a quasi-legislative hearing in which the board carries out a rulemaking function granted by the legislature. We will take under submission all written and oral statements submitted or made during this hearing. The board may pose questions to speakers in order to clarify their testimony. We will not respond to these comments today, but will do so in writing in the final statement of reasons that will be submitted to the Office of Administrative Law following the board's adoption of the regulations. The entire APA rulemaking hearing will be recorded and webcast live. A recording of the hearing and all exhibits and evidence presented during the hearing will be made part of the rulemaking record. If you have brought written comments with you to supplement your testimony during the hearing today, please give them to our regulation specialist, Ellen Mazzario. Ellen, did I say that anywhere close to being right?
(laughter)
Good. And Ellen's right there in the back of the room. As you entered this room, you were all offered an attendance sheet to sign your name and a space to indicate that you want to stand up and make oral comments on the proposed regulations, or a space to mark that you just want to attend the hearing. Please fill out the attendance sheet even if you don't wish to speak. If you fill out the attendance sheet and provide your complete address, we will notify you before final adoption of any changes to this proposal or about any new material relied upon in proposing these regulations. Such a notice will be sent to everyone who submits written comments during the written comment period, including those written comments submitted today, so everyone who testifies today and to everyone who asks for such a notification. Did I skip a line? I think I did.
(inaudible)
No, we're good. We're good. We're good.[218.01][218.01](laughter) This is quite the script. While no one may be excluded from participation in these procedures for failure to identify themselves, the names and addresses on the attendance sheet will be used to provide the notice. If you have not yet signed the attendance sheet and you wish now to do so, please raise your hand. Ed has it right here.
There's more copies in the back as well.
Okay. And so if people sign in or come in, Ellen, are you going to keep an eye out for people that come in? So then we can get new attendance sheets up here. All righty.[254.81][254.81](applause) Thank you, Ed. We will listen to oral comments in the order you requested to speak when you signed the attendance sheet. After we hear from everyone who signed in, we will hear from any latecomers or anyone else who wishes to be heard. When you come up to speak, we have two microphones. Please begin by stating your name and identifying the organization you represent, if any. Are we going to have them come up here? Either mic. Begin by stating your name and identifying the organization you represent, if any, and tell us the section number of the particular regulation you want to discuss. Please limit your comments to five minutes. At this point, the rulemaking record includes six items. The first is the notice of the proposed action, which was published in the California Regulatory Notice Register, December 20, 2013, number 51-Z, pages 2010 to 2014. The second is the draft text of the proposed action using underline to indicate additions to the California Code of Regulations. The third is the initial statement of reasons for the proposed rules. The fourth is a board item, credible compensation, policy issues, April 11, 1996. The fifth item contains written comments received to date. The sixth item is the economic and fiscal impact statement. These regulations were duly noticed more than 45 days prior to today's hearing, and copies of the notice were sent to all interested parties who had requested rulemaking notices. We will now take oral comments on the proposed regulations in the interest of time. If you agree with the comments made by a prior speaker, simply state that fact and any new information you feel is pertinent. So I will read the name of the person that needs to be at the mic and the next person to speak, so you all don't have to stand in line at the microphones. Okay. All right. So Maggie Ellis, we'll have you first, then Jennifer Baker on deck, and in the hall, Sal Viassonor. All right, Maggie, go ahead.
Thank you, members of the board, for this opportunity to have this public hearing. Maggie Ellis, Chair of CTA Retirement Committee. I want to first acknowledge that we've had some very, very long conversations with staff over these regulations, and I think on both sides we were pulling our hair out trying to come to common language, but ultimately, I think we have done that, educated both sides of what our needs are and the intent is, and there's no challenge from anybody that we want solid, good regulations. We don't want to do anything really quickly and having to clear it up later on. In your initial comments, you asked for specific sections of the code, and quite honestly, I can't, because there were so many things throughout the whole document that we had concerns of. And most specifically, I will speak to the language around release time and the class of employee as it relates to a teacher. School districts are a very unique beast, and when we talk about the job description of a teacher, it encompasses many different things and is accomplished in many different ways. And so a lot of our dialogue about release time had to be that education point of what it meant, both for your K-12 teachers as well as your community college teachers. What we understand for release time is totally different from what CalSTRS was understanding for release time. So that was one concern. And then the creation of different classes of employees and then different salary schedules that went with them, we also had concerns. But like I said, through our conversation, and we hope through continued conversation and whatever new language is created, I think that we will come to a common ground that's going to work both for CalSTRS' needs as well as those needs of negotiations tables and districts. So thank you for your opportunity, and I will drop off some points in the back.
Thank you, Maggie. Ed?
Yes, for the word of information, the section that she was referring to around the release time is Section 27-400 subdivision C.
Could you repeat that, please?
Section 27-400 subdivision C. It's the second page of the text of the draft regulation.
Thank you. And that had to do with release time?
Yes.
Thank you, Ed. Jennifer, Sal, and then Gary Stein.
Can I just ask a quick question, Dana?
Yes. Hang on, so let's get Maggie back up. Maggie, we have a clarifying question?
Oh, no. Actually, it's...
Never mind.
It's to Ed. I'm sorry, Maggie. So the language we have here is...
That is the language that was submitted to the Office of Administrative Law.
Okay.
And is at this point the only language that... We've had discussions with other people about alternative language, but what they're talking to is to this language here.
So the comments that we're hearing is really kind of a comments related to the text that you provided us?
Yes.
Great. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Baker and company with the California Teachers Association. I wanted to just comment about the timing and process. We appreciate the process that you're going through formally, and it's our understanding that at the April board meeting, that the board will be able to talk about this more comprehensively, and it's my understanding that we'll also have much more comprehensive discussion about different regulations that are going to be considered that you had considered previously. So I also wanted to note that we would very much appreciate having another formal hearing on this, which would not likely take place until, my understanding is, it might be June. I know the timing might not be as convenient, but we would ask, since we weren't able to have a formal board meeting on language that everyone could somewhat agree to, that we have an opportunity to do that, just in case there might be any more bumps in the road as we go along. But we very much appreciate the process and have to really commend CalSTRS staff. We know this has not been an easy process. I think it's, as Maggie noted, it's been quite an educational process for everyone within CalSTRS as well as various stakeholders to understand exactly what we're talking about, because for a long time, we were talking about apples and oranges. So we hope that we'll be able to all talk about apples together in the next month or so.
Thank you, Jennifer. Sal, Gary, and then Dave.
Sal Viassonor with the Association of California School Boards... School Boards, I'm sorry. Boy, that was a mistake. Association of California School Administrators.[685.32][685.32](laughter) I should be representing school boards as well, but school administrators. Members of the board, it's important for us to also echo some of the comments that have been said prior to me, and that is how much we appreciate the staff of CalSTRS and their work and their willingness to allow for lots of input in this process and the ability to dialogue about those particular elements of the regulations that are difficult to put our arms around, because they're very difficult for purposes of implementation at the local level. I have with me today, and I know he'll introduce himself, but I wanted, for the record, to reflect that AXA, as an association, has created a reactor group composed of school districts, county offices of education, superintendents, local personnel, and the individual who'll follow me will also speak as a business official, because these regulations, not only, I know as you're trying to ensure that there's clarity in the kinds of things that qualify for the defined benefit portion of the law and the supplemental portion of the law, they do have huge implications on how districts operate on the issues of hiring, the issues of calculations about final compensation. So I wanted just to point out that Section 27-600 of the regulations, consistent treatment of compensation, is one of those that is extremely difficult for school districts in that it calls for language pertaining how you measure compensations levels from predecessors and successors, and it's not an easy task to do. School districts governed by their local boards make a lot of hiring decisions and use a lot of different salary components to make decisions about how they're going to pay individuals, and it's not that simple to just simply say that you can measure an individual's compensation simply just by saying you were started here and the person that followed you should have been within that same range, when in fact, it could have been very different salary levels. So when you're looking at ultimately those challenges around the spiking issue, it's not an easy task to do. And so we appreciate spending a little bit more time in that particular area and look forward to working with the commission and the board and its staff in these regulations as they move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Gary Stein, then Dave Walbra.
Good afternoon. Sorry. Good afternoon. Gary Stein, Orange County Department of Education.
Gary, you might have to move a little bit closer to the mic.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, this is my first...
That's okay.
(laughter) I wanted to echo some of the kudos that Sal had for the CalSTRS staff. They've really been great working with the school districts and the county offices of Ed and this reactor group, very inclusive. The process has been very inclusive, and it means a lot to us to have our input taken into consideration. With regard to any concerns, one thing that's been a concern for school districts is, and I'll just point out, Section 27-201, the effective date, and that sounds like an odd thing to throw out there, but one of the things that's a main concern for school districts is what happens to all of the earnings in the reports that have been provided to CalSTRS up through the point at which these regulations become effective. And these, I would say that all districts agree with what we're trying to do with the credible comp regulations and, you know, preventing spiking and doing all of that. But what we want to make sure is that in this change of regulatory environment, that there is some sort of a hold harmless for the members and the districts up through that point that these new regulations become effective, because school districts and county offices and community colleges, for that matter, are statutorily obligated to comply with the directives from CalSTRS, and so they've been doing that for well over a decade. And so what we want to make sure is that as these new regulations become effective, that all of the reported earnings up through that point are... We need to make sure that as long as districts are following the directives and the guidelines and the advice from CalSTRS, that they're held harmless. So that's what we'd be asking for. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. David?
Dave Walbra, representing Small School District Association. We fully concur with the testimony provided by the previous speakers, and in particular, two points. First, the need for another public hearing. This is a complex set of regulations. It has a significant effect upon how school districts do business. We would hope you would have that second hearing. We know it delays the process. That does create problems for us as well, as we try to craft contracts to ensure that we do have the appropriate allocation of credible compensation. But even with that, we think it's important for all the stakeholders to feel comfortable with the types of regulations that are proposed, and for that reason, a second public hearing. We also agree with the hold harmless issue, agreed not only for current members but for retired members. When is their retirement security secure? And to the extent that you start looking back, then you put doubt upon the security and the retirement allowances of those who've retired in the last few years, and potentially even those who've retired in more than two, three, four, or five years. So the question is, when is security truly security as far as a CalSTRS retirement? Lastly, for many of the districts, particularly very small districts, even though they may be working with their county office, it would be helpful in the implementation process, although it's not directly in the reg, but in the implementation process to allow prospective judgment by CalSTRS where a school district could ask a question, if we do this, will it be in compliance? So they will be able to craft their compensation in a way that does not create a problem downstream. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Those are all the names that I have on the list to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Ed? Ed Foglia?
CTA retirees. Just briefly, and perhaps I'm missing something, but one of the things that I have a concern with is when there is credible compensation regarding retirement, what notification does the employee get that there might be a change? We're talking about the average, let's say, classroom teacher. They're doing extra work, and they might qualify for the defined benefit supplement program. And there's... Is there any kind of requirement that the district, conjunction with CalSTRS, lets that person know? Or do they have to find out from their annual statement? If that's the case, I think that we should be a little bit keeping the employee in the loop as much as possible when we make some of these changes, when their personal retirement is affected. And then also, as you know, we had a lot of retirees coming and appealing some of the judgments that have been rendered in regards to the retirement, a defined benefit supplement where there have been overpayment. And I believe that we need to look at a reminder that if these rules and regulations aren't followed, that there could be some penalties or something to that effect. Some enforcement of accountability, I think, needs to be part of these regulations. Thank you.
Dave Davini?
Hi. Dave Davini, retired member. I just want to remind you again that I believe that penalties and interest charged to districts end up being less money available for the education of children and less money available to bargain for salaries for teachers and the like. So I don't want to get carried away with penalties and interest and trying to find out who's wrong and penalize them.
Thank you. Any further comments? In thinking that we might have more people that wanted to speak to it or perhaps speak longer, we did set our hearing time till 2 o'clock.
Didn't we say we'd interrupt?
No, we said we wouldn't interrupt.
Whatever else we're doing.
Brian asked us not.
It's like the suspended animation thing really different.
Yeah.
He's suggesting that... (inaudible).
Yeah, that's what we discussed last time. Apply the... The direction we gave prior, because the original... (inaudible). There's a lot of the... (inaudible). (inaudible).
No one's asking to be relieved of burden. Going back, well, it's a prior rule. Like an amnesty, because if they were wrong under the prior rule...
Yeah. No, that they shouldn't be held.
Amnesty.
No. No.
Before, I don't know what your plans are, but there is one other thing related to the hearing that I just want to give people and give the board an update in terms of where we go from here, or do you want to wait till after the hearing is completed?
I thought we'd wait till...
Okay. That's fine.
(inaudible). Because you were going to ask me my opinion, so...
No, we may didn't say that.[1397.13][1397.13](laughter) We'll never do that again.
Do you have a musical number or something you want to do?
So we will hang for the next half hour in case someone else would like to speak. Uh-oh. You better come back, Sharon. We have somebody that's going to speak.
Yeah.
Hi, Steve. Hang on just a second. Okay, now we're kind of official. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Steve DePew, retired CalSTRS member as well as retired from CTA. And I'm going to make a suggestion. As a current school board member, I'm often have been in the situation where we've been... We have to run lots of public hearings, and what we do is to simply open the hearing and have it, but then leave it open and concurrently run the other part of the agenda. Now, I don't know if your rules permit for that, but that way you could continue on with your meeting, and so if anybody else were to come in, you could also revert back to having hearings, the hearing statements made. So I will yield to the legal opinion, but that's where we do it in black of mind.
So Steve, I'll tell you what we did. We had that conversation and felt that the importance of these regulations kind of reigned supreme and that we wouldn't interrupt the hearing with our own business, and we kind of took a poll of the board, and the board seemed willing to go there, so that's kind of where we find ourselves now, as we said we would dedicate an hour for the hearing. Unless Brian wants to weigh in, we've got some time to hang.
I think, no, and I think Steve just actually, he just concretized what I told you. He was able to get up, speak, hearing was still open, gave us his opinion, and that's the way it's going to be until 2 o'clock.
Okay.
So thank you, Steve, for proving my opinion was correct.
So we will hang till 2:00. All righty. We'll come find you if we need to share.
We can hang out right up there, maybe.[1567.13]
...
Thanks, alright if you could have everyone make their way to their seats please.
...
...
...
...
...
...
Jack?
Jack?
...
...
Over.
Aww.
I know, I hate it when recess is over. So, we will ask a couple more times, are there any further comments?
Please.
On the credible compensation regulations? Any further comments? Alright, seeing none Ed, why don't you go ahead and wrap this up for us?
Sure, just in terms of where we go from here, the comment period has closed, it closed a couple of days ago on the 45 day written comment period. So, we'll take the feedback that we received, both from those comments and from the comments today. And we'll be working with the different groups to try to come up with language that addresses those concerns as we feel is appropriate. And then we'll present a summary of that feedback and our response to that feedback and what those changes of regulations are at the April board meeting. So, the one issue that came up, which I don't know you necessarily have to decide today, but you might want to decide today, is whether there's a second hearing. As Jennifer mentioned, that second hearing would have to be in June, you couldn't do it in April because it wouldn't be anything to have a hearing about. Until, assuming that the language that we present to you in April is, seems acceptable to you, that will go out for everyone to review and then there'll be a second comment period that would allow them to comment on those changes. And then the hearing, if there was a second hearing, would have to reflect comments on those changes that are made in April. So, whatever was not changed would no longer be subject to comment.
Could you just take that to the finish line though, if there was a second hearing, the effective date and what's the downside? I heard some speakers mention that there's also downsides of long too.
Well, yeah, at this point, yeah, well, the hearing by itself doesn't have a downside as far as the effective date. Because as things stand now, even though we at first thought we could have an effective July 1st, that no longer seems possible. The changes that would be needed to address the concerns is going to require a second 45 day comment period. We couldn't get to the finish line in time to have a July 1 effective date. So, now we're looking at a January 1 effective date, which is fine, that works for us, it'll work for the schools. And so, we could have a second hearing in June. Then we would come back to the board in September for them to adopt the final regulations, which could then go through the process after that to become effective in January. The one way it won't work is if we need a third comment period based on the conversation after the second hearing, then there isn't enough time to get it all done, get it to the office administrative law in time for it to take effect in January. So, as long as we can substantively address the concerns that have been expressed and are reflected in the hearing and the changes made in April, we can stick to a January 1 implementation date and that shouldn't be a problem.
Already, it sounded to me, I know within the write-up if there was substantive comment that would make changes to it, that by law were required to go to the second 45 day.
You would have to go to a second 45 day comment period, it's up to you whether you have a second hearing though.
Already.
The second hearing would happen before.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
The second hearing would happen before that we, you go back out for the 45 day comment.
No, we'd have the second hearing at the end, after the second.
I'm sorry Michelle.
The second 45 day comment period would be done in early, well, I guess it'd be in early June.
But wouldn't that public hearing at that time only be able to address the comments of the changes, not of the overall?
Yes, not of the whole thing, just of the changes.
I thought the request for the second hearing was on this set that we're, yeah, I'm wrong.
Well, they've identified concerns.
Right.
And as I understand it, they want to make sure there is a hearing on how we address those concerns. So, the issues they didn't address and aren't changed would not be a subject matter of the second hearing. So, if they had a concern about it, they should have raised it now.
Okay, I guess.
So, where can I go?
And that would be within, if those comments weren't made, the odds are they've been written and sent in before the.
If they were, yes, we would assume that they've communicated one way or the other about any concern they've got.
It's understood what the ask was for the second hearing.
Okay.
I thought it was on this set.
Okay, Cher?
But just for clarification, we're getting a write-up in April?
Yes.
That integrates the conversations and comments that you've had with different stakeholder groups?
Correct.
And we'll see that in April.
And you will see those comments, our response to them, and then the corresponding changes that will be identified as the track change, you'll see the track change. Then you'll have a discussion about it, you can, obviously the members can, you know, the audience can interact with you on that. And then if you're comfortable with those changes, then we can go out for a second 45 day comment period at that point.
Alright, what's the, Brian?
I just want to add that your sort of drop dead date is December 20th, 2014. You have a year to get your stuff over to OAL once you start the process.
From when we started.
From when you start, it sounds like it fits within the time plan that you're discussing, I just wanted us to all keep that in mind.
Alrighty.
And also just, in order to get it effective January 1st, we have to get it to the office administrative law by October 13th. So, that's why the September date really is the last date that you can adopt them in a normal hearing.
Alright, any comments on whether we want to go 45 days now or do you want to wait till April?
Well, no, you would not go 45 days now, you wouldn't go 45 days until.
So, we would make that, but I thought you said we can make that decision today.
No, the decision would have a second hearing, having a second public hearing in June.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
That's a decision you can make now that you will have a second public hearing in June.
Okay. Pleasure, or we can make that also in April?
I believe you can, I don't see why you couldn't, but.
I'm getting nods from the audience.
I mean, it may just be for the interest of people knowing, understanding the process, you could make that decision now if you're prepared to make it.
Okay, so pleasure of the board.
So, let me, I'm still a little.
Go ahead and look here.
So, I thought I'd heard something different about 10 minutes ago, so we can have a second hearing in April? I thought we couldn't do it until June.
No, no, the hearing in April will just be the presentation of revised regulations. If you're having a second public hearing, it would not be until June.
Great, okay, because there were conflicting pieces.
The question that Jennifer says is whether you can make that decision in April to have a public hearing in June.
Correct.
So, make the decision today or make the decision in April to have another public hearing in June, correct? Is that what we're deciding?
Yeah, I just wanted it. It's an inexact use of the word hearing for what's happening in April.
No, we're not having a hearing in April, we're having a meeting in April.
The decision to have another public hearing could be made in April.
In April, yes, to have a hearing in June.
And another 45 day comment period would be made in April, the decision to do that would be in April.
Yes, by virtue of, if you approve the revisions, you would be compelled to have a second 45 day comment period based on the extent of those changes.
Okay, is everyone clear? Pleasure to wait to April? I think everybody's, yes, we're going to wait till April to make those decisions then. Alrighty, thank you Ed. Alrighty, the hearing is over.